Alrighty, I'm gonna wait though, City Clerk until we hit 5 o'clock.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Okay. Okay, are we also live streaming it, or do we need a countdown on that?
This won't be going to YouTube, so we're just gonna be recording it.
Okay.
Yeah, so it won't be as soon as 5, as soon as we're ready to go.
Okay, well, my computer says it's 5 o'clock, so I will welcome all of you to our San Rafael City Council special study session. And right now, it just looks like we're even smaller on the screen because we're all in the room, it's to have a conversation, so thank you for putting up with that. I am going to request the City Clerk to call the roll on this item.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hell.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yedem Scalati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present, we are all here. In a moment, I will share how the City Clerk can address public comment. But I will say, so this study session is really so we can have a conversation and have a dialogue, so the council has the opportunity to speak with TAM. I see that TAM Director is here, as well as other representatives. And to have that kind of, I'm gonna say off-dias, because we're still in that virtual dials, but to have a conversation and ask questions, and then as well hear from the public. So it's a very informal, we're gonna try to make it informal and meaningful using the format as it is. So with that, I will turn it over to the City Clerk, and she can share how folks can participate.
Thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to announce that tonight's City Council meeting will include Spanish-language simultaneous interpretation, provided by qualified interpreters on the Spanish Zoom channel. You can join the Spanish channel by clicking on the interpretation icon in Zoom in the toolbar, it looks like it low. And as a reminder, we ask that everyone participating tonight, please speak slowly to allow our interpreters to effectively express our comments. And now I'll invite Paloma to just repeat what I said in Spanish. Hello, are you there?
Antes de que empecemos, me gustaría anunciar que este junta esta noche va a incluir el lenguaje de español en su interpretación simultánea, proporcionada por una calificada intérprete en el canal de Zoom. Usted puede encontrar el canal de español apretando el icono de Zoom en la barra abajo de su televisión o su pantalla, y está para un icono de el mundo. Si quiere participar, por favor participe hablando lentamente para permitir a nuestros intérpretes que expresen su comentario efectivamente. Gracias.
Thank you. This meeting is being recorded, and viewers can provide comments by telephone or directly through Zoom using the raise hand feature. And if you're commenting over the telephone, you can press star nine when Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. And once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. If you're commenting through Zoom, please use the raise hand feature to let us know that you would like to speak, and wait until you've been unmuted. If you experience any technical difficulties, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofsanrefel.org. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Paloma, for your translation this evening. So we will get right to it. Again, we are trying to have a conversation and dialogue, and we will use this format as best as we can. And tonight's topic is the Highway 101 Interstate 580 Connector Project, which of course, I think everyone I see on the screen, we have had other discussions about it. We're gonna go a little bit deeper, so I will turn it over to, I guess, Director Garen, who will introduce it. Yep, there you are.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Bill Garen with the Department of Public Works. This is a very important regional project that also has big implications on San Rafael. And so Ann Richmond, Dan Cherrier, and Connie Fermier from TAM are going to present information about the project tonight. And we're looking for feedback from everyone about the ideas that are being presented, and ideally, which ones are the least desirable to San Rafael. But we'll get to that. There's a number of different ideas for how to connect 101 to 580 eastbound. And it's an interesting presentation, I think everybody will find fascinating, so I will simply turn it over to Ann Richmond of TAM, so that she can make the presentation, so we can get the comments back from everybody. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Garen, Mayor Kate, council members. I'm Ann Richmond, Executive Director at TAM. And as noted, I have a couple of the project staff here with me tonight, Dan Cherrier and Connie Fermier. And we know that you've heard about this project, so I hope you'll indulge just a kind of relatively brief presentation about it. If we can pull up the slides, Connie, that'd be great. We're trying to keep tonight's presentation short to allow time for you all to provide feedback and talk about it, and hear from members of the public that may be here as well. So you may recall that we presented information to you on this project in December 2020, and then again in July of 2021. And Connie, if you want to just go to slide two. We're really just here tonight to provide an update and to hear from the city about alternatives, in particular that they believe TAM should drop from further consideration as we move from the planning phase into the more formal environmental review phase in 2022. It looks like Connie's tinkering with the slideshow here, so I'll give her a second.
Yeah, my apologies, it won't go into slideshow mode for some reason, and we just had tested that prior, so... But I can just keep going. Sorry about that.
Great. So if you go to the next slide. There we go. So just a reminder about the project goals and objectives here. So these goals have been refined a little bit over the last year with input from the community and our Stakeholder Working Group. And we added a goal that I think is the fourth bullet here, related to equity based on that community feedback. So just quickly, the goals are to build a new freeway-to-freeway connector between northbound 101 and eastbound 580 to improve that connectivity and traffic flow for both local and regional traffic. And related to that, to separate the regional traffic from the local traffic and reduce traffic congestion. In addition, the project will seek to enhance bike and pedestrian network and access within the project area, promote equity for all users, particularly members of the equity priority communities near or within the project area, and also to design the project such that it does not preclude construction of a future connector that goes in the opposite direction from westbound 580 to southbound 101. Next slide, please. So following our last presentation here in July, the council discussed guiding principles for what's important to the city regarding the project. And I know these are included in more detail in the staff report, but just to kind of quickly show them here. There were seven principles, including reducing travel delays and increasing transportation choices, supporting future economic investment and development, improving safety, fitting in with the local setting and being aesthetically pleasing, minimizing impacts on the environment, designing for the future, not the past, and building the project in an efficient and timely way. So these projects, excuse me, these principles were refined slightly by your staff following that July meeting. But this is the summary of what was developed. Next slide, please. So I thought it would be important just to walk through a little bit more context with this project. I know we've spent considerable time talking about the specific alternatives, but just to kind of provide a little bit more of the history of the project and kind of how it came to be, I guess. So a direct connector has been included in local and regional plans over the last few years, including TAM's 2017 Vision Plan, MTC's Plan Bay Area 2050, and Caltrans' US 101 North Comprehensive Multimodal Corridor Plan, or CMCP, which was approved by Caltrans in 2020. In addition, the project is specifically identified in a couple of funding measures, including both Regional Measure 3, where it is slated for $135 million, and in the Marin County Half-Cent Transportation Sales Tax that TAM administers, Measure AA, which set forth $16 million for expedited project planning and for funding local improvements. So both of those funding measures were voter-approved as well, so there's some pretty significant planning and history with the project. Next slide, please. Another important piece of context is how the project fits into the overall transportation system here in Marin County. So this map hopefully is legible to everybody on Zoom. But it shows the many improvement projects that are underway or are envisioned for the 101 and 580 corridor. And as you can see, there's a lot of work throughout the county, and this is really one piece of the overall system. So some of those other improvements include completing the Marin Sonoma Narrows, improving Highway 37, modernizing and improving interchanges all along 101, ramp metering, potentially bus-on-shoulder or part-time transit lane, park-and-ride lots, and transit facilities. So this is a really important link in the transportation network in Marin, and it is one of many improvements that are being worked on. Next slide. So over the last year, as we've been developing the plans for the Direct Connector Project, we've used a Stakeholder Working Group comprising about 20 different individuals and interests throughout the county to provide feedback and sort of check-ins with TAM about community interests and questions regarding the project. I will note that of this group, there are nine and maybe more, depending how you count, representatives that are kind of focused on San Rafael interests, and we certainly appreciate all of their feedback and the time that they've spent working with us over the last year. Next slide. In addition to the Stakeholder Working Group, we have been conducting outreach with a variety of other entities, including those that are shown here. So there's a Technical Committee and an Executive Committee that go along with the Stakeholder Committee. We've done either presentations or meetings with a variety of public agencies and city staff, as shown here. We've also had meetings or presentations with a number of community organizations and property owners. Just one example from the community organizations that I wanted to mention is about two weeks ago, we were invited to present to the Federation of San Rafael Neighborhoods, and there were about 45 people in attendance. We were co-presenting with Resilient Shores, and both TAM and Resilient Shore answered questions and heard from policymakers and neighbors about various aspects of the project and of transportation in San Rafael. Also wanted to mention that we'd be glad to present to any other community groups as well, just feel free to contact the project team. Next slide. So a little bit more about the project itself, and just to kind of refresh people's understanding of the need for the project. And that is basically that if we do nothing, if we have a no-build scenario, traffic is just expected to get worse, such that by 2040, it will take, it will go from taking 13 minutes now to about 25 minutes to go from the Tamil Pius interchange on 101 to Bellum. So the travel time will about double for that. And as Sir Francis Drake becomes more congested, shown in red, more vehicles will start to use Bellum, and you can see on the map that that exchange, that interchange, becomes red as well. So whereas it might be the case now that more people are taking Sir Francis Drake Boulevard to get to the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge, over time, as traffic gets more congested on 101 and on the various off-ramps, people will switch to taking Bellum in order to try to avoid some of that Sir Francis Drake Boulevard traffic, and you'll end up with about even distribution between the two and an overall longer travel time. So as transportation planners, one of the goals of this project is to provide a better connection to get that regional traffic off of the local streets, so that the regional traffic can proceed, but also importantly, so that local residents and people trying to get to businesses in East San Rafael can access the businesses and communities there. Next slide. So this is what we've fondly started calling the spaghetti diagram, and this shows the nine alternatives that are under consideration right now. And this is what we are here to get your feedback on specifically, is which of these alternatives we should not move forward with, or which are kind of less desirable from the community. So just quickly to walk through what they are, starting from right to left. Alternatives 1A and 1B are the hillside alternatives, so they come off 101 a little bit further to the south, and they skirt the hillside. 1A is a little bit lower on the hill, and 1B is a little bit higher up on the hill, and then they join 580 down around Central Marin Sanitation. Moving to the left from that, Alternative 6, and Alternative 2, and Alternative 5 are kind of in the middle of this East San Rafael area. They each have slightly different features, but basically kind of exit 101. You can see a little bit further to the north versus Alternatives 1 and 2, and cross through those areas of East San Rafael on an elevated structure. Then we have Alternative 4, which we call the swing-out option, which actually crosses over 101 to the west, and then crosses back over it to come along 580. So this alternative was developed because it can be built almost entirely in public right-of-way, so there's very little property impact. However, it is a quite high structure and has to cross the freeway twice, so it has some pretty significant disadvantages as well. Then finally, Connie's using the cursor to try to highlight these. Kind of tucked into the area between 101 and 580 in the corner there are Alternative 3A, 3B, and 3B Modified. And those are kind of the tightest curve alternatives. They're also generally the least expensive alternatives, and they kind of take up less space than some of the other alternatives. So the reasons for the red and the green on this map, and I'll get to this in a minute, are that in general, the red alternatives are the ones that have, we've heard, less support for from the different groups. And the green alternatives are the ones that we've heard somewhat more support for. And obviously, that is gonna differ a little bit depending on who you talk to, but just overall, that's kind of a summary of what we've heard. So I'm not gonna go through each one of these in detail, but we do have backup slides available if you have questions about specific alternatives, or we need to pull up a more detailed map. Next slide, please. So this table just shows some of the key features of the alternatives, namely, design speed, a preliminary cost estimate, and then whether or not it would require closing the 580 off-ramp to Bellum. So in terms of the costs, you can see that they range from about $114 million to almost $400 million, or 379. And just a reminder that these are preliminary, it's based on a very low level of design, so the numbers will likely change as design advances. And in particular, I also wanted to mention that the numbers will probably change as we get further into analyzing local road conditions and get more sort of detail on what operational changes might need to happen to make a particular alternative work. The design speeds for the alternatives range from 35 miles per hour to 50 miles per hour. And generally, the higher, the alternatives with higher design speeds are also the more costly alternatives. I'm highlighting the off-ramp closure in the column to the most right, because that was pretty clearly an issue for the community, and closing that off-ramp was, what we heard was that that was highly undesirable. So there are two alternatives that would need to close the off-ramp from 580 to Bellum, so not from 101 to Bellum, but from 580 to Bellum. And that's Alternative 3B and Alternative 4, and that's just because of the geometrics of those options. The feedback from the community did cause us to develop this modified 3B alternative, which would leave that off-ramp open and available, so that alternative has been added. Next slide. Another aspect of the project that I just wanted to remind everyone of is that it will include improvements on Bellum Boulevard itself, regardless of which alternative is ultimately selected to move ahead to construction. So among the, excuse me, among the improvements to Bellum would be replacing the eastbound 580 overcrossing over Bellum. The westbound overcrossing was replaced several years ago, and this project would replace the eastbound overcrossing with a similar structure that doesn't require those columns in the middle there that Connie is highlighting. And that's important, because that will provide more room for bike lanes, traffic lanes, sidewalks. It really creates more opportunities in this area, which is pretty highly congested right now. So that's a beneficial feature, no matter which alternative is selected. Next slide. This slide is meant to show the kind of range of bicycle and pedestrian improvements. And it's a little bit hard to see on this map, but we anticipate that we would be looking at improvements all along Bellum, basically from Anderson to Kerner. And that could include bike lanes, widened sidewalks, improved transit stops. The diagrams shown on the bottom here are really just conceptual, and we would intend to work with the city and with community groups during the environmental and design phases to really figure out what design and what features will work for the area and would be preferred by the community. Next slide. So in terms of preliminary feedback, I'm gonna walk through what we've heard from the Stakeholder Working Group and some of the project committees and some of the other community groups. So what we've seen so far is generally lack of support for Alternatives 3B, 4, and 5, and partly or largely that's because of concerns about closing that Bellum off-ramp, but also because of visual impacts and business impacts. We've also heard pretty limited support for those hillside alternatives, 1A and 1B. And although some people are more supportive of them because they offer a faster speed and because they're furthest from the residential neighborhoods, others have noted that they are cost-prohibitive. They're the ones that kind of go through the hillside open space, so they're likely to have environmental impacts and impacts on that open space, as well as impacts to properties like Marin Sanitary Service. And those impacts would likely increase with a future westbound-to-southbound connector as well. We've heard some limited support for Alternatives 2 and 6, although there are some concerns about the structure height, the visual impacts, and the commercial or business impacts. And we've heard more consistent support for Alternatives 3A and Modified 3B, largely because these have a smaller footprint, the impacts are more concentrated, and they have a lower cost that's more within the range of available funding. Next slide. So in addition, through the outreach process, we've also heard about some local challenges. And while the primary scope of our project is this direct freeway-to-freeway connector, we do expect that we'll be able to do some local improvements, as I've talked about, along Bellum, and also potentially at the Bellum interchange there that could be incorporated as part of the connector project. So some of these challenges are the traffic sort of backing up onto the freeways from the off-ramps, the constrained movements, and close signaling on Bellum. And what I mean by that is that there are a lot of traffic signals very close together. And so operationally, it's a pretty interesting and constrained traffic area. And in addition, as I also just talked about, the need for additional improvements on Bellum for bicycle and pedestrian safety and connectivity. So we've been starting, we've been working with the City of San Rafael on some of these challenges and kind of looking at different ways to address them. And we will continue to explore those further, in addition with input from the community as the environmental phase kicks off. Next slide. So looking ahead, as we move from the planning phase into the environmental phase over the next years or so, these will be the activities that the project team will focus on. So the first bullet there is in reference to what I mentioned about the Federation of San Rafael Neighborhoods and the presentation from Resilient Shore. And we'll be working with them over the next couple of months to look at a concept that they have put forward for a different interchange further east on 580 that serves what I would say is a different purpose, but we're willing to work with them to kind of look at the engineering and the feasibility of that just at a very kind of high conceptual level. In addition, over the next couple of months, we do want to try to narrow down that spaghetti diagram from nine alternatives to two to four alternatives to move forward into environmental review and analysis. You know, the environmental process is very technical, there's a lot of really detailed studies that occur during it, and analyzing nine alternatives really isn't feasible, so we want to narrow that down. We also plan to work on outreach and community capacity building, in particular with the Canal Neighborhood over the next year or so, to really sort of prepare community groups and community leaders for being able to provide meaningful input during the environmental process. So we know that there's a lot of interest among the neighbors in this project, and we want to really kind of set the stage for being able to work with them in a meaningful way going forward. And then formally, we would initiate the environmental scoping and public input process on the connector project and on the alternatives. So we expect the environmental process will take a couple of years, so if we started in 2022, it could go into 2024 or early 2025. The project would then go through design, right-of-way acquisition if needed, and then into construction. Next slide, which I think is the last slide. So that really concludes the presentation. As I said, we do have some more detailed slides that show the alternatives, if we need to pull those up. But if not, I think we can end the slideshow, and look forward to hearing your feedback tonight, and happy to answer your questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Richmond, and I appreciate that kind of high-level overview. And if anyone on the council wants to have additional slides, as you said, I know you can pull them back up. So we're gonna vary a little bit from our traditional format in that in addition to any sort of questions, I would also like to have councilmembers commenting. I mean, we are trying to have a dialogue, so as much as we can do that, but I will call on you because it's too hard to try to interrupt each other. So I will start with the Vice Mayor, maybe you have some questions or kind of comments, and let's try to have a conversation as much as we can given this format.
Well, I have two comments. The first one is very easy. I want to agree with your color coding. In what you're calling the spaghetti drawing, the red ones that you're seeing limited support for, I support and agree with removing them from the consideration. I think that's the simplest way to do this, and I think that gets you down to the ones that were most interested in you studying. So that's the big picture, that's how I see this on the topic that we're, the narrower topic that we're here to discuss. In addition, I would like to talk about one of the other things that you had on your list of big projects for Marin County, it was improving approaches to the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge. That was on your list. It is closely related to this project, but probably temporally first, hopefully, in our minds. That is, it will happen first, because the connector project is many years in the future. I would love it if, as a short-term, more urgent and immediate focus, I mean, you were to, in addition, focus on ways to improve the access to the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge, most importantly, down through the entranceway through San Quentin. The name of that road just went out of my head, I want to save on air, but that's not it.
Sir Francis Drake.
Sir Francis Drake, yes, Sir Francis Drake. There's Sir Francis Drake entrance to the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge. To look at any and all immediate actions that can be taken to alleviate that major point of, the worst congestion in probably central and southern Marin County is at that intersection. the worst congestion in probably central and southern Marin County is at that intersection in the evenings on, on business days. So to recap, out with the red and in with some interim measures.
Thank you. That's a great point. And do you want to speak to some of those interim measures? Because I think everyone on the council would be interested what's being looked at.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Vice Mayor Bushy, for the comments and questions. So with regard to the kind of interim work or approaches to the bridge and some of that work, so that, that map is actually a year or two old, I think. And some of that work has actually been done already. So you all may remember, three or four years ago, TAM had a project that actually extended some of the two-lane portion of Sir Francis Drake a little bit further east so that it went past the second Larkspur Landing Circle stoplight. And we also worked with the city on synchronizing the traffic signals along Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. So those projects have already been completed. In addition, we worked in conjunction with Santa Fel and, hold on, can I just finish? And MTC and Caltrans to extend the bike access from the bridge along Sir Francis Drake Boulevard by building that cycle track. And there's a future project that your staff has also been working on and was just awarded some grant money to, along with MTC, to improve bike and pedestrian access at the east end of Francisco Boulevard, where it connects to the multi-use path on the bridge. So some projects have already been completed. Some are still underway or to come in the next few years.
I'm wondering if maybe some of those projects should be revisited. I'm particularly thinking about the signalization in that the most significant source of traffic in that area, the Golden Gate Ferry parking lot, is essentially non-operational. And that has changed in the last year and a half. I'm wondering if there are new opportunities caused by the change in traffic patterns on Sir Francis Drake that would justify a relook to see if there aren't some tweaks that could be made to improve that.
That's an interesting point, and I will look at my traffic engineers to see if they have anything to say about whether those signal systems can be kind of adjusted, I guess, to account for that kind of traffic. And might be something that we have to follow up with the city of Larkspur and Caltrans on, but it's an interesting idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, those, those traffic lights, especially the one on West Larkspur Landing Circle, the one where the traffic comes out from the, from the lot for the ferry. It is on, it is a on-demand type of, you know, traffic signal. So if there's not as much traffic coming out of the parking lot, it'll have a, the green time will actually, actually be not as long as it would be if there was a lot of traffic trying to get out of the parking lot. Put away that, that automatically adjusts by having these smarter traffic operating signals. So that's already been done. And, and that work has really affected the traffic flow in the short term. It used to be about 75% of the traffic that was on 101 North going to the bridge took Drake. And about 25% took the exit from, you know, Bellum to get onto the bridge. And as that work has happened, it's almost all taking Drake right now. So it's pulled that traffic away from, from Bellum. Unfortunately, that's a short-term change because as the traffic builds more and more, Bellum is going to become more of an attractive option for those. And our modeling is showing that in 20 years, it'll be about even again. And the, the main thing we could do to help Drake was this short-term project we did a couple, a couple of years ago because having the merge always happening is the way it happens. Now you get enough traffic past the Larkspur Landing Circle, traffic signal on the east side. Merge can always keep happening. It used to be that traffic was held at the traffic signal, then it had a merge immediately on the other side. So that, that is really helping things out for the short term.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Hill, I'll go to you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, TAM, TAM team, for coming with us today. I had a couple of things I wanted to comment on and ask about. First of all, appreciate the, I would say, a deep and genuine focus on the community engagement. That seems really essential here, and thank you for embracing that. I also appreciate inclusion of Jeff Rhodes as part of this process as well. I think that, that really rounds out and to take in a, I think, a good point of view. I also, like the Vice Mayor, appreciate the elimination of, of certain alternatives. I think that, that gets us to, I would say, the next step, and I concur with what was eliminated. I wanted to ask, when I saw a plus symbol next to some of the budgets, can you go into a little bit, expand on what the pluses mean? It was a loaded one, and I told myself stories.
Thank you. Yeah, Director Richmond.
Sure. So I think you're referring to the slide with the alternatives summary table. And on that, that slide, modified 3B and 6 both had plus signs next to them. And Dan and Connie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's because those alternatives were developed a little bit later in the planning process than some of the others. So there really, there hasn't been quite as much technical work done on them. So although all these estimates are preliminary, those two are even more preliminary. So those could change probably more than the other ones.
Got it. Thank you for that. And then when I saw land, you said land acquisition for right-of-way if necessary. It was given a three-year consideration. Do any of the options, my recollection is that some of the options may not require acquisition. Would that mean that we eliminate potentially three years in the process? Or we would incorporate three years irrespective of the option?
So the only alternative that really does not require any land acquisition is alternative 4, that swing-out option, which is almost entirely on public right-of-way. So the other alternatives, if, if selected and if they move ahead, would require some amount of right-of-way acquisition. And I'm trying to be a little careful with my language here because we're not in the environmental process yet. So I'm just trying to kind of be a little bit careful about how I'm talking about it. But that's the, alternative 4 is the one alternative that's pretty much entirely on public right-of-way already.
Got it. And trying to be respectful of the carefulness that you're trying to exhibit. Do, if there is, are there degrees of land acquisition that, such that it could be less than three years? Or we're just going to need to say at this point has to be a three-year duration?
That's, that's just an estimate. I mean, it's really, it just depends on the alternative and on sort of how the process goes. You know, there's sometimes negotiations, sometimes gets into a more of a legal situation. So three years is just our best estimate at this time.
Thank you. Two more. With respect to future, in the, in the modeling, is there any consideration for, I would say, a couple of assumptions around transition to electric vehicles and autonomous vehicles in the modeling to consider a different, maybe future paths? I know it's probably impossible to say exactly which it would be, but is that considered as we model traffic patterns in the future in terms of driver behavior today versus, say, more and more vehicles being able to more optimally consider the road speed?
So in terms of electric vehicles, I mean, those obviously have an impact on emissions, but they don't necessarily have an impact on congestion because people drive them just like they would drive a non-electric vehicle. In terms of autonomous vehicles, I'm going to ask Dan or Connie if they know whether autonomous vehicles and kind of the ability potentially of cars to travel closer together was accounted for in any of the modeling, or if we're not kind of at that stage yet?
Yeah, we're not at that stage yet. And I know that's something new that keeps popping up, you know, in projects. And so it's something that is being looked at, how to evaluate and consider. And we'll be looking at that in more detail in the environmental phase in terms of how that would be addressed.
Thank you. And my final question is, I thought it was really wonderful, too, in consideration of, you know, Bellum in the roadway there in terms of what could be. Are any of those considerations factored into the current budget estimates? Or is that above and beyond that we need to seek additional funding?
We have some amount of, of that work that is included in the current estimates. So the kind of bike and pedestrian work on Bellum itself and the replacement of that overcrossing bridge, those are included in the project budgets that are on that table. What's not included is if we have to make sort of further improvements to the local roadways to accommodate the alternatives. So dealing with, I don't know, just, I don't even want to speculate on what that would be. But if we had to, you know, realign something or do more work on the signalization that's not already part of those initial estimates, that would be in addition to the numbers that you see on the table.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurt.
All righty. Thank you for the update. I think this was one of the first presentations I got when I came onto the council, which is about a year ago. So it's great to see where things are at now. Although I think one of my questions at that time was about eliminating options. And now, a year later, I see that we have more options. So I do also agree with the spaghetti chart that, you know, the red ones. To me, I haven't found anyone. And what I've been trying to do is find people who are supportive or not supportive to all the options. And for the ones that I've been identified in red, I haven't found anyone who supports them. So my question is, what, what do you need now to make it, to make the determination of removing an option? Is it just community input? Is there some other factors that need to be taken into consideration for removing options?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So, I mean, meeting with you all is an important step and getting the city's feedback on them. We also will be going to the TAM Board of Directors over the next couple of months for their feedback. And at some point, that will be an action item for the TAM Board is to approve the act, the alternatives that are moving forward into the environmental document. One other kind of twist on that, if you will, is that we might hear from Caltrans that they want us to include or not include a certain alternative based on their design standards or their policies. We have been talking to Caltrans certainly over the last many months about this project. We don't have a directive from them yet that looks like that, but that is something that could happen as the, the project moves forward.
So along that line, then, do each of the groups have different criteria that they're going to weigh into consideration of which options should be at the table or be part of the two to four options for CECL?
Well, the TAM Board has been hearing and will hear the same kinds of information that you all have been hearing about the alternatives. So, you know, the board members will take into consideration the same kinds of things that you're considering and whatever their, their local perspective brings as well. Caltrans, interestingly, you know, they have standards for design speed and geometrics and things like that. At the same time, I would say Caltrans as a state agency is undergoing a little bit of a transformation based on the administration's current priorities. And so some of their policies may be changing over the next couple of years. So honestly, it's a little bit hard to say what, exactly how they'll approach a project like this. But I'm sure we'll be working very closely with them as, as this moves ahead.
Okay. In terms of our timeline, I mean, we have absolutely no idea. But we're not, we're talking about probably at best 10 years out. So we're talking like 2030. Is there any advantage or feasibility of doing the bike and pedestrian work or some variation of that in, as an interim? Or do we have to wait?
I'm not sure I know the answer to that right now. I think, you know, we want to evaluate it all together in the environmental document. And then if it's possible to phase the implementation of it based on an environmental clearance, that's something that we could, you know, potentially consider. But I think we do want to look at all of the work, including the bike and pedestrian together in one environmental review.
Because it would be nice if, I mean, since we have so many years in between this conversation and actually having something delivered, even if there is a feasibility of doing something interim, even if it might be, you know, I hate to say throwaway, but something that may not hold the whole time for the future. Wouldn't it be possible to put up the slide that has the categories? That you, you put the different options in the different categories? Because there, the options that have come on fairly recently are not, I don't know, recently, within the last year. This one? No, no, not that one.
You mean the one with the comments?
Supportive, supportive, not supportive, sort of supportive.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, so the strong support, so that's strong community support? Or is that strong agency support? Or is there a combination of both?
I think it's a combination of both. I mean, these alternatives, so what we asked the Stakeholder Working Group, for example, in the TAC, was which alternatives should we not move forward with? And these alternatives that you just mentioned, 3A and modified 3B, were not in that group for really almost anyone. So whereas some of the others showed up as more mixed, these two, 3A and 3B modified, almost always showed up as ones not to drop from further consideration. Sorry about the double negatives, but just trying to be clear on what we asked and how, how people responded.
Okay, so 3B, alternates for 3B and the lack of support, and then strong support for alternates 3A, 3B. That's, those are two different 3Bs.
3B, it says modified on it, so it's.
3B modified versus 3B.
3B, yeah.
Okay, I, I, it might be maybe at some, if we have time to go back and look at 3A and 3B modified, if those are ones that have strong support to understand a little bit more why those are, why those are getting the strong support versus, the very, the, the red ones, I should, because under the very limited support, the three, the one, I'm sorry, this is so confusing. Alternates 1A and 1B, those were red. Which ones were also red?
Connie, do you want to go back to the spaghetti diagram?
I'm trying to put the two, those two pictures together so we can map the spaghetti to the support thing.
Yeah, so, so 1A and 1B are those two that the cursor is pointing towards, those hillside options. And those are red, and those are, you know, didn't garner very much support. And then the other red ones are 4 and 5. So 4 is that swing-out option, you know, very tall structure, has to cross Highway 101 twice and would close that Bellum 580 off-ramp. And then alternative 5 goes pretty much right over Marin Square, that, that shopping area there. So there was a lot of concern about the, just the location of that and kind of the impact of that. Then the ones that are green here are alternative 6, which comes down off the hill, kind of goes through a stored, one of those kind of storage facilities, and then over the Golden Gate Transit District property, their bus yard there, and connects to 580. And then alternative 2, which is a little bit of a similar curve, but essentially near Sims Street, so kind of along Sims and then connecting to 580. And then 3A and modified 3B. So 3A is kind of right in the corner there between 580 and 101, behind Marin Square. So a smaller structure, less kind of footprint area. And then modified 3B, a little bit similar to 3A, but also includes kind of building a new exit from 580 onto Bellum. So whereas the original 3B would have just closed off that Bellum off-ramp from 580, this constructs a new off-ramp from it so that that connectivity is maintained. And if it'd be helpful, we can pull up the other diagrams that show those in a little bit more detail.
After we go through, if there is, I want to make sure we have enough time for the community for questions. Can I just now go back to the alternatives, the balance? I just want to see where four and five, were those also? Okay, so lack of support. Okay, great. So those are the reds are on the left side. Got it. Thank you. All right, I'm good. Not as confused, but.
A lot of, lot of information, that is for sure. So Councilmember Yoren Skoladi.
Yeah, thank you so much. And, sorry, I'm trying to navigate all the screens. So, yes, so thank you so much, Ann and Dan and Connie and all the representatives from TAM for helping me understand this project better. In addition to different calls, we have participated in several visits to the different sites. And TAM has been very generous with their time. So really, really appreciate that and being able to actually physically see it. Really want to appreciate as well the San Rafael community, especially the southeast neighbors, helping me with the homework I've been doing and also our staff, you know, with Public Works and Jim and everybody has been, it's been really great. So I do have a few questions and some of them, you have heard me before. So the first one is, you know, all the options that you are providing here and also all the presentations that you are doing to our different stakeholders in the community are based on the speed of the cars and the time that it takes to go through the roads. And there's a question that I've been asking several times and I still don't have the answer. And it's around the traffic data. How many cars are going through Sir Francis Drake and how many go through Bellan and San Rafael? And this is just, you know, for the record, this is my commute. Every day I go from like Mill Valley to exit on Bellum in San Rafael and is bumper to bumper from Mill Valley until you pass Sir Francis Drake. And then, you know, you start moving again until you hit Bellum. So my understanding, and I don't know if this is correct, but is that Caltrans has daily data of how many cars go through all the roads in the network. And I guess then you mentioned the data when you, when Caltrans added the third lane in the Richmond Bridge, that 75% of the cars were going through Sir Francis Drake and 25% were going through San Rafael. And I think I heard you tonight saying that actually since the improvements on Sir Francis Drake, that now most of the cars are going through Sir Francis Drake? That's, that's, okay. So, so I guess, if, you know, if that is the case, can you tell me why all the options that you are presenting are all in San Rafael without having current or future traffic data that is like based on the number of cars? And so that would be my first one, because I feel that we are talking about, how about these different options here or there? But my bigger question is, why are we looking at San Rafael only and not in Sir Francis Drake? And I know that there were some options in the past done in Sir Francis Drake. And can we add that concept to? Because until we do the environmental review, we are not really going to have all the data. But can we add that as one of the options? And can you answer the question around traffic, like how many cars? And why are we looking just in San Rafael?
Thank you. Yeah, Director Richmond.
Sure, I'm going to look at Dan or Connie to see about the number of cars. I think, you know, you heard the comments about the split, the traffic split between Sir Francis Drake and Bellum. And, you know, not just what it is today, but what we expect it to be in 2040 if there is no project. And over time, as Drake becomes busier and busier, people will figure out that it's taking them longer. And so they'll start looking for other options and head up to Bellum. And so by 2040, it'll be both more congested and about an even split between the two. So Dan or Connie, do you have more information about the number of cars? And then we can, I'll come back to your question about Larkspur.
The actual number of cars that are taking Bellum right now and going straight through during the main hour for the peak is, is well less than 100. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but it's, it's, it's a very low number compared to Drake right now. Fortunately, our modeling is showing that that will even out. And I, and you did see that one slide that our modeling is showing that right now it's taking 13 minutes during the worst time to get from the Tamil Pies over crossing to get off of the freeway and on to Bellum Boulevard. And that time in the next 20 years will go from 13 to 25 minutes. And the only way we can eliminate that increase in, in time for the people trying to exit onto the local streets on Bellum is to separate the regional traffic away from the local traffic. And the way to do that, of course, is one of the, one of these options. So that the traffic heading towards the local roads is taking that travel. And the people headed to Richmond, San Rafael Bridge are taking the direct connector.
Right, and I guess I'm a little bit with Vice Mayor Bushy as well, you know, with the improvements on Sir Francis Drake. That's why I know how many car, you know, I mean, it is the bulk of the car, you know, is going through Sir Francis Drake. There is traffic going through Bellum. But we really haven't done like any traffic study at all. When the cars are leaving and are exiting on Bellum, I just have my own, being stuck bumper to bumper, observing cars where they are going. The majority are going into the canal right now. They are like, and I will even give you like my own percentages, like 60, 70% are going to the canal. Maybe 15% are going right to the, you know, Anderson Drive. And maybe that 5%, I don't know if that summarizes 100, is going straight into 580. So wouldn't it make sense to do a traffic study first? And then set up like the options in San Rafael and also on Sir Francis Drake and select two or three to do the environmental review? So we can really get all the data? Because we are talking about a huge project without really having that information.
Well, Councilmember, I mean.
Director Richmond, I'm going to interrupt you for a second because I see the city clerk. I think we're probably switching our interpreter.
Thank you.
Yes, we can just hold on a moment.
Give me one moment, I'm going to tell the interpreter.
Okay.
Have to remember to speak slowly.
We're ready. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay, Director Richmond, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no problem. Thank you. So with respect to your question and the point you were just making about Larkspur, I mean, TAM, TAM did make some improvements to Larkspur as we talked about already a couple of years ago. And those did make a pretty significant difference. But it is important to remember that the goal of this project is to create a freeway to freeway connector that separates the local traffic from the regional traffic. And so making more improvements on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard as a local road does not meet the goal of the project. And if we were to look at building a new freeway structure on Sir Francis Drake or over it or next to it, you know, there really is no physical place to do that without running into the shoreline right there. So, you know, we recognize that there's a lot of constrained geography in the Santa Fel area as well. But it is a little bit of a different sort of built environment compared to the shoreline in Larkspur with Sir Francis Drake. So we certainly will be doing more traffic studies and more traffic analysis as part of the environmental process. And we agree with you on the need for that at this point. But we don't think that a Larkspur direct connector alternative merits further, further study or analysis at this point.
Okay, so that's, I guess, the question that I have. Because to me, in order to make like a decision that is going to be so impactful, it makes sense to do an environmental review where you can really look into, you know, the environment and a lot of different components as well. So that's, you know, that would be my recommendation. Like I would love to see, in addition to the options that you have in San Rafael, that you are actually including that. And, you know, and part of that also, in our field trips in San Rafael, that we were looking at the options on site, and I think it was the modified 3B and 3A. You are, for those options, you are not planning to add an additional lane to 101 North. So this means that all the options, the two options that you are presenting and any of their options, we will still be using the same lane whether you are exiting on Bellum or whether you are going into the connector. So we are doing this project because we are trying to improve traffic. But there is a, you know, if suddenly all the traffic from Sir Francis Drake, that is almost 100% now going through Sir Francis Drake, is now going through that connector, you're going to have all the traffic plus the traffic that right now is sitting on the Bellum exit. So not only is it not going to improve the traffic, but I, in my mind, it's actually might make it worse if you still only have like that one lane going or 101 accessing the connector. That, that doesn't make sense to answer that question before, you know, the, this big project, again, based on how many cars and where is your expectation? How are you going to alleviate the traffic on Bellum and the connector if you are going to keep the same lane on 101?
So Councilmember, the, Dan, just you can jump in in a second. But the situation that you just mentioned is actually one of the things that we're looking at and that is kind of what I meant when I was talking about the Bellum operational improvements. So we, we heard your point on the walking tour and we started looking at a little more detail at exactly that question. And while I don't have any, you know, drawings to show you tonight or any, you know, specific response about exactly how to address that, that is something that we will be focusing on during the environmental process as well is, you know, how, how will the connector really work? And what other improvements would we need to make in order to make it most effective and make the local road network work better as well? Dan, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, just, just very slightly. We are planning to probably have to add a lane to 101 North between Sir Francis Drake and wherever the direct connector takes off to, to separate the traffic from Bellum or the traffic going to the direct connector. But exactly what that'll look like is still being evaluated. But there will be additional capacity on 101 to handle that, that very issue you just brought up.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's actually, I'm glad that you're looking into that. That's awesome. Okay, my next question is, you know, as you know, there is an alternative option that is not as an alternative, but as part of this project, we are just looking at the connector instead of the entire area, right? And I totally understand that this is specifically funding from Caltrans for this, you know, for this connector. But I, I know that you are considering the presentation from Jeff Rhodes, which is adding a new way to get in and out of the canal and east-south San Rafael around the area. I can remember the name, where you go towards Target and the dealerships. And I understand that this requires an accession from Caltrans and it's not easy to get. But, but I'm hoping that you will consider this as, as an option at least to evaluate it. And also, I think it's on the option 3B, the one that you're actually adding the connection from 101 south into 580, that it could be even like maybe closing that one if you open the other connector a little bit farther, you know? And I think we talked about that in one of the field trips. And it will require some work, right? Because we don't know if the option from Jeff Rhodes is going to be feasible or not. But at least to keep that in mind, I think it would be very beneficial, you know, for the project. Not just, you know, because, I mean, for the safety and the access from the community right now, that there's only one way in and out that will really alleviate the traffic, you know, and give other options where there might actually be less congestion on Bellum. Because some cars might want to go, you know, to dealerships and that area instead of going, you know, into the canal. So again, like a traffic study would be really, really helpful to have.
Any additional comments? No, thank you, Councilmember Mica. Okay. Any other comments or questions on that?
For me, you mean?
Yes, did you have anything else? Yes.
Oh, yeah. Yes, okay, so I have a few more questions. The other one was around adding, I know that the project to add another lane on Bellum Street is actually, is something that TAM has in mind. So given that the project with the connector is going to take a long time, this, adding another lane to Bellum exit is going to make a huge difference like right now in the traffic. I really believe that it's going to alleviate that area. And can we prioritize this project? It's also not going to cost as much money as the connector. So is this something that we can prioritize to do as soon as possible?
Councilmember, so just for everybody else's benefit, the project that Councilmember Yoren Skoladi is referring to is a project that we're working on with, with Caltrans to add a lane at the Bellum exit from 580 and 101 so that there isn't as much weaving of traffic. I'm sure everybody who's been through that exit knows you have to cross a couple lanes to try to get where you're going oftentimes because of the configuration and the turns there. So that, that project right now is under review at Caltrans. They've had it for some time. They're continuing to look at it. We have a funding shortfall on that project once it gets out of that review. So we would have to seek some additional funding in order to complete it. But we are also, we are interested in moving it ahead, just as you are. So we will potentially look for outside grants or other ways to complete that project.
Okay, well, that's excellent news. That would be amazing. And then my next question, it was the same question that Councilmember Kurtz had regarding the potential pedestrian and bicycle improvements. Because this period is going to take so long, the community needs a safe way to go, you know, in and out, you know, for pedestrians and bicycles. So can we, you know, prioritize this part of the project to make it available?
So I, I'm not sure if you're looking for a response on that, but I would just, you know, give the, give the same response that we would like to do the environmental clearance for the project and including the bike and pedestrian improvements as a whole. And through that process, you know, we could potentially consider phasing some of the improvements if it's doable in terms of construction and not wanting to build things and then have to rip it back up. So we will, we, you know, could potentially look for those opportunities, but we need to go through the environmental process first.
Okay, great. And this is my last question, so thank you so much for bearing with me. It's around the national infrastructure bill. Are there like any potential opportunities for San Rafael? And when are you connected with Caltrans on the 101 580 connector? When is the timeline, you know, like right now TAM is going into development? And when do you connect with Caltrans?
So the trillion dollar infrastructure bill, I think, could present all kinds of opportunities. Some of the programs in that bill are brand new. So we really, you know, have to wait for more direction from the federal government to see how that will roll out and how money will flow. We are keenly interested in following all of those developments, though, as you can imagine. So we do hope that there will be some opportunities in there for Santa Fel, Marin County, the state of California, et cetera. But I can't at this moment say, you know, that a particular program will lead to a particular amount of funding. But we hope so, certainly hope so. And then, let's see, your second question was about Caltrans. So we have been talking to Caltrans already about this project. They're aware of it. It was included in their own 101 corridor plan. They're aware of it. It was included in their own 101 corridor plan. So, that's just an ongoing discussion. I'm sure we'll be talking to them about it more over the next year or so as we move into the environmental phase, and then probably even beyond that. So, in, in terms of when we may get some feedback from them, I really, I really wouldn't want to speculate on that. But we do talk to them very regularly about this project and others in the area.
Great, well, thank you so much. Again, well, a lot of questions, but I really appreciate all your time. It's great, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you. No, great, great questions. And in a moment, I will open it up to the public. We'll have about a half an hour of public, because I do want to ensure that the council gets something to eat before our council meeting. We want to have everyone energized for that. And of course, recognizing that, I think the decision date is 2025, so if you aren't able to get public comment tonight, not to worry. We are still in the beginning part of this process. And always, I know that Anne has always been very open to any feedback via email or however people want to give feedback. I did just want to quickly weigh in. I agree with the spaghetti drawing. It's a terrible name for that diagram, but I'll use it, because you're using it. The red ones, I think, should be eliminated. I, to have them keep coming forward when they're not feasible or supported throughout the community, to me, starts to undermine the process a little. So I really look forward to the presentation where those are not included on the slide anymore, and we just go ahead with the green ones. So, with that, I will ask the city clerk to come on and help us manage. And being that, again, we're trying to do the study session format. Normally, we're all like crammed in a room, and people are raising their hand. We will do a three minutes versus the usual two. So if you're speaking, know that if you take that extra minute, there might be another member of the public who might not get to speak. So please use it judiciously, but let's go ahead and have three minutes. So, with that, city clerk?
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, please use the rose hand feature. And if commenting by phone, please press star nine. And once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six and mute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment, and then, excuse me, three minutes to provide public comment, and then we'll be muted once time has elapsed. Please speak slowly to allow our interpreters to effectively be able to express your comments. And I do see some hands raised. All, you'd be using my phone for the timer, so I'll hold it up. About 15 seconds left, 10 seconds left. 15, I'll do.
Great, thank you.
Is that me, Naman, if I'm unmuted?
Yes.
Hi, Lori Schifrin, thank you. First of all, I didn't see very much of the public involved with your stakeholder people. I saw two things that said commuter. The reason I find out about these things is because I actually pay the federation, and they include me on their emails. Otherwise, I wouldn't know about these meetings, and I am a member of the public. I've taken your maps to a number of people, because I have them sitting in my car, because this is a good topic for me. And I show them the maps, and everybody that I know wants the ones that go up and over the hill, because they don't see why they're going to Santa Fel to then backtrack back down to the Richmond Bridge. I've said that before. I feel the same way. I don't understand why it's coming up to go back down. I also think that, and this was brought up, that taking the two worst exits, which is the one to Bellam and the one to the Richmond Bridge, and putting them together, which is basically seems what's happening by moving the one from Sir Francis Drake up to San Rafael. While you guys were talking, it sort of dawned on me, gee, why don't we do a bridge around San Quentin and do it all on the water? Which is probably not a feasible thing, but it, it's just, it keeps it out of San Rafael. I don't understand why you keep going back to San Rafael. There's probably a good reason, I just don't get it. And that's pretty much it, you know? It needs to be so much better to get people to go, to not take Sir Francis Drake, though.
Thank you.
And I think as we're doing this, Anne too, maybe at, at the very ending, being prepared to tell how people can be involved, and so we can continue with any stakeholder meetings or whatever that is, if they, they're not coming in to Lori's point to tonight's meeting. I know there's lots of ways you're seeking feedback, so let people, I'm sure to bring that up. Okay, next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Rhodes, Executive Director of Resilient Shore. As you know, we sent you a letter last week with stakeholder endorsements. Our primary message, it's time to comprehensively address the 101 580 corridor deficiencies. We provided a list of challenges that require remedy. Like each of you, when I hear challenges, I expect the messenger to provide potential solutions. It's in that spirit we have offered the concept for a new Southeast Santa Fel interchange. My colleague Rick Phillips and I initially conceived this idea in 2012. It's been refined based upon stakeholder input, field observations, a growing awareness of the environmental context, and ongoing engineering studies by TAM. Although Rick and I have many years of experience in transportation projects, we don't have the civil engineering expertise to prove out the interchange concept. If it works, it will have threaded the needle of a very complex physical environment. It could be a game changer for Santa Fel and the region. If it doesn't work, it will inform the corridor planning process and the identification of other solutions. We are grateful for the in-depth engineering studies prepared by TAM, including the direct connector alternatives and the Richmond-Santa Fel Bridge third lane study. These, along with the proof of concept for the Southeast Santa Fel interchange, can provide a foundation for a corridor plan. We're grateful for stakeholder guidance. They contend with the daily congestion and ongoing public safety hazards. We seek your optimism and leadership to take on and solve these, this challenge. Success will provide our city the capacity to embrace a resilient future. It will support moving forward with a Southeast Santa Fel Canal PDA Plan and a shore and watershed adaptation plan. Thank you all for your service and your hard work on this.
Thank you, Jeff.
Can I go?
Ready for you.
Okay. Terry Hughes, we know that the city had voted on the eight guiding principles, which apparently are now seven guiding principles, to look at, look at the various options. What I haven't ever seen us do, though, is literally apply those guiding principles to any of the designs. I don't care what the design is, but literally defend the options that you're coming up with in the context of those guiding principles. I also remember Mayor Kate bringing up the, the point that, hey, we have a lot of guiding principles. They cannot possibly all be of equal weight, and I would absolutely agree. I would put forward that design for the future should be at the forefront of this, and that additionally, improving safety plus improving local traffic flow for future economic investment and development, which to me are subsets of designing for the future, should be highly taken into consideration. But I would like to literally know how putting this particular connector in San Rafael is literally really addressing these points versus making other considerations for this. Additionally, with respect to, we keep talking about the bike lanes. I would say that there's very few people that are using bicycles to go in and out of, of the canal area, out of, in and out of Southeast, Southeast San Rafael. And what I have more of a concern about, and it goes back to, to also what, what Mica had, had brought up, is just how congested it is for 14,000 people, probably more than 14,000 people. And that there is only one way right now to get out of this area in, in the course of an emergency. And all I see is that we're just going to be dumping more traffic, because I do not believe for a minute that any of this is going to, to correct any of, of the flow that, that is going in and out of Bellam right now. I also just want to quickly address the idea that option 3A and 3B were considered strongly. I would say that they were the best of a whole lot of not very good options. But that isn't saying a whole lot, that they were strongly supported. And I would say, because we were left out of the, of the working committee, that you really have not really heard from the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. And I, I think that's a good point, just for the director to hear, regarding the guiding principles of laying those against, as alternatives start to get prioritized or eliminated. I think that's an excellent point. And again, I will just reiterate, in terms of feedback, we are starting a long process, and I know that the director will be prepared to speak to how everyone can continue to give input. So, we want to make sure that the community knows their input is needed and will be heard. So thank you. Next person, please.
Hello, this is Amy Lycover. My husband Joe and I live in Gerstle Park. I'd like to thank the TAM team, as we call you affectionately, for the head nod that you gave us earlier of the federation. I'm speaking just on behalf of myself and my husband. We are delighted that you are going to do a proof of concept with the Resilient Shore idea. I'm also very grateful to Councilmember Jorin Scolati for having studied this issue so carefully. She was the only council member in attendance at our forum, and I'm very, very grateful for that. And I think she came away with a lot of information. Also agree completely with Terry Hughes' summary, and I thank you, Terry, for that, about, and Lori mentioned this as well, as far as really reaching out to different community members, but additionally, reprioritizing those seven concepts. Thank you for that, Terry. And also to de-congestion, if that's a word, the canal. I am so hopeful that there will be a way of finding a solution to the, the suggestion by Jeff Rhodes, just to open up that neighborhood for evacuation purposes and also for travel, because that is one of your, one of your guiding principles. And is just, you know, to, to divvy up the traffic, the regional versus the local traffic. And in, in our mind, that's just such a brilliant suggestion. So I thank a resilient shore. I thank Councilmember Jorin Scolati, and I thank the TAM team for being so open to this idea.
Thank you, Amy, for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Grace Garrity, and I want to totally echo Terry Hughes' comments regarding guiding principles. She, she stole my thunder, so I'm glad others are feeling the same. And I came on the call a few minutes late, so I might have missed. I, I don't understand, and maybe at some point it can be discussed, why it's going to take so long to 2025 to, to kind of make a decision. I understand that, you know, and especially since all of you have been working on this, and believe me, I am very grateful to TAM and the coordination with Caltrans. So, at some point in, in either future meetings, I, I really would like to understand that in, in more detail. And I also echo, I don't know if it was Terry or maybe Amy. I, I don't think the, the public has been really given enough of a chance to comment or understand this. And, and it would be great if that could be done more. I know it's going to take time, but ideally, if we want to move this forward, it'd be better to get more people to comment earlier. Thank you so much, all of you, for everything you do every day.
Thank you, Grace. And of course, that is why we're having a study session, because it is a process, so this is one of another opportunity. I know there will be more. As it is a study session, would you mind, Director Richmond, to just quickly, briefly talk about why it takes so long? I think when people are new to agency and infrastructure projects, they might not understand the timing. So if you could just speak to that, I think that's a good question. And then, city clerk, we'll go to the next person after Director Richmond.
Sure. I mean, I, I think those of us involved with capital projects really would like them to take less time and to be able to deliver faster. But often, it does just take a significant amount of time to get through the, the environmental process with all of its technical requirements, and to also take the time to do public outreach as part of that process. And really, until that's done, you can't move forward with getting into detailed design or discussions about property or right-of-way. So, things have to happen kind of sequentially. So, there's usually, you know, an environmental process, and then some period of time where you're developing the detailed engineering and design, doing property acquisitions if needed. And then, at that point, you can begin construction. And construction on a major project, you know, can be complicated and take quite a while. And even on a, a smaller project, you know, might take a matter of months, depending on the, the size of the project. So, we do always look for ways to try to speed up that process and still, you know, meet all the requirements and provide opportunities for public involvement, because we want the projects not only to happen, but the longer they take, usually costs go up over time as well. So, we are constantly looking for ways to make projects happen in a more expeditious fashion, but we also need to meet a lot of requirements as well.
No, thank you. And I was actually just reflecting at the sidewalks on East Francisco Boulevard, I think, took over a decade, just saying, from the moment, probably even longer than we started talking about it. Not saying it's the way it should be, but unfortunately, often it's the way it plays out. So thank you for that. City clerk, we're ready for the next person.
Hi, I'm Corey Sias, and I'm also a resident of Southeast Santa Fel area from Spinnaker Bay Point and Canal area. And I believe that frequency matters, so I'm just going to quickly reiterate something that Terry Hughes brought up, and that is a huge concern to me, is the safety of us being able to get in and out of this area in case of a disaster or an emergency. It is really backed up. The traffic is really bad. The signals, again, are a problem. And I'm just hoping, and I feel, I sense, I'm feeling encouraged that I'm hearing that there's willingness to expand the scope of this project beyond just a connector, to address some of the real big issues we have here in San Rafael, if we're going to end up taking on a connector right in our community. So thank you for considering these things. And I, and again, I do think that they, the idea of trying to improve access in and out of this area does address the number three guiding principle, which is to improve the safety. So thank you so much, all of you, for taking the time to listen to all of us and studying all of this.
Thank you, Corey. And, and Director Richmond, if you could clarify, because I, I did not hear that the project scope would be expanded. I did not hear that. What I heard was that you'd be looking at proof of concept in addition. So it's actually two, and that's, I want to be very careful, because those are very specific things. And I'm sure, being a TAM member too, when I, when I hear that. So could you speak to, I think, just maybe what the proof of concept is? I think that's what she was referring to.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kate. I appreciate that. So, yeah, just, just to be clear, we, we are not saying that we're going to expand the scope of the direct connector project to include the Resilient Shore's interchange proposal. What we are doing is working with Jeff and, and his team to look, just kind of take a moment to kind of look at their concept, see if we can provide any feedback in terms of feasibility from an engineering perspective of that, that concept. But that would be an entirely separate project that would need to go through its own whole development process, similar to kind of what we're doing for the direct connector. Our project really isn't scoped or funded sufficiently to incorporate another whole project of the size and scale of that, that concept.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Alice?
Hello. I want, I live in the same place as Terry Hughes and Corey Sias, and I want to just reiterate what they're saying, so that you just know that there are more people than just, you know, that there are lots of people who are interested in this. And I'm not going to describe it all. You heard it, but thank you very much. And I'm not going to describe it all, you heard it, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Alice.
Hey there, can you all hear me?
You sure can, go ahead.
Thanks a lot. Thanks, everybody, for recording this, this evening. I'm Dave, I'm a resident here of Central Santa Fel. And I just wanted to continue supporting the ideas around, around really evaluating the alternatives or even all terms that haven't been fully suggested by TAM. According to the first principles that were proposed, I, I thought that was a really great point that another resident brought up. That we should, we should evaluate all of our alternatives, especially even in this early stage, according to our first principles and the impact of the community. Since this is considering, you know, this, we're going to bring traffic, whether or not on our surface streets or through, you know, an overhead connector through and into our community. We really also should consider comprehensive solutions for the whole corridor. So that, you know, we're, we're thinking about this and not eliminating any opportunities for connectivity in the future. And then lastly, you know, bike and pedestrian connectivity really helps better bike and pedestrian infrastructure, helps people have an alternative to driving. So these alternatives, especially the ones that, that improve bike and pedestrian infrastructure, let people use those, those alternates more often and, and get people out of cars. Which is a great thing and is, is something that we should always be very top of mind of when we're considering any alternative. So thank you very much, thanks for listening and appreciate your, your attention and, and, and work on, on the, the city council and, and TAM.
Thank you, David.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give everyone a few seconds to use the raise hand feature or if you're calling in, press star nine. I see no further public comment.
Thank you, I will close the public comment and bring it back. I think there were excellent points. I appreciate the public that's taking the time, who has already given input and will continue to give input into that. And maybe someone on the TAM team could speak to how people can continue to be engaged. I mean, this is part of a very long conversation as it is such an important project.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kate. So there certainly will be more opportunities for the public to be involved and to provide comments. You know, the environmental review process offers several opportunities for that. And in the more near term, we will be bringing this discussion to the TAM board over the next few months. So keep an eye on our board agendas if you're interested in following it there. If, if anyone wants to be added to the email list to receive updates about the project, we can certainly do that. You can send an email to Marin101-580@tam.ca.gov and we'll add you to the list. Or if you go to the TAM website, there's a, an area for this project and you can sign up to receive updates on it that way as well. And if there are any neighborhood groups out there, we're happy to meet with you as well. Just get in touch with us through any of those methods. We've done a number of presentations to different groups already and we can certainly continue to do that as the project develops.
Thank you. So hopefully, everyone got that website address, that very least, I know they can go to the Transportation Authority Marin TAM website to figure out how to sign up. So, so Anne, did you get some of the information that you were hoping to get this evening from, from the council? And I'm thinking so, but I want to just give you one more chance to respond to that before I close the meeting.
I think we did also, thank you. I mean, I, I heard, I think, pretty much across the board from the council members that you agree with the kind of red and green on that spaghetti diagram. So that points pretty helpful to us. Also, you know, desire for continued public outreach, for looking in some more detail at some of the traffic information, traffic data studies as we go along. Councilmember Jorance Gulati, I know you have a particular interest in Larkspur. I'm not sure we'll be able to meet that, but we can continue talking with you about the project and its community impacts. And then just to respond to a couple of points that members of the public brought up about kind of broader area planning or corridor plans. I know the city of Santa Fel has designated East Santa Fel as a priority development area. And I think that staff has an expectation that they'll be doing more planning around that in the future. TAM would certainly be happy to partner with the city when it comes to looking at transportation and access as part of that broader planning effort. And I think it would make sense to tie those two efforts together eventually. Because if you're looking at sort of growth and population in certain areas, that's a great time to also be looking at the transportation issues. So we're happy to keep working together with the city on that as well. So if I missed anything from any of you or you have any final points, I'm, I'm still taking notes. So thank you all very much for your feedback tonight.
Yeah, well, again, thank you, TAM, for coming. I know that we will have additional conversations and we know where to find you and we'll keep this going. I am going to close this part of the meeting, the special session, I guess, the special, whatever you're calling this, a special study session. So thank you all for participating, for those who listened, I saw that we had quite a few attendees, so thank you. And for those who are inclined, our regular council meeting starts at seven o'clock. So you can go back on and we'll be in another Zoom room. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Again, thank you, TAM, and the rest of you, I will see around 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.